Hi, everyone. I'd like to call to order the Board of Education meeting for Celine Area Schools on October 12, 2021 at 6:30 PM. If everyone could please rise for our Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome. And I see we do have some folks standing up. There are some chairs over here if anyone would like to take a seat if your legs get tired. I wanted to comment on our team wearing pink tonight and the little flowers. We've had a nice tradition these last few years of recognizing Breast Cancer Awareness Month with our Board of Ed trustees, and we wanted to carry on that tradition. The flowers are my gift to our administration and trustees and Julian to remind them to schedule their mammograms or give the flowers to loved ones and remind them to schedule theirs as well. So, you're welcome. Cool people like pink. And especially Brad's shoes. Steve, you have a comment?
Yeah, I'd like to remind everyone that per the mask mandate from the Washington County Health Department, masks are required in any school building in Celine Area Schools at any time. This Board of Education meeting is included. And this mandate and masks are required unless you are speaking in public comment at the podium. Failure to comply is a violation of Michigan's Public Health Code and could result in a misdemeanor and/or civil monetary penalties. Thank you.
All right, thank you. We're going to move to public comment. This is our first opportunity for public comment. A member of the public may address the board briefly for up to three minutes or request to be scheduled on the agenda of a future meeting. Please note that students will be given priority to speak on any topic. The first public participation portion of the meeting will be limited to one half hour, 30 minutes normally, and limited to agenda items. A second public participation portion will be offered at the end of the agenda to allow for any additional further comment. Individuals addressing the board should take into consideration the rules of common courtesy. The public participation portion of the meeting cannot be used to make personal attacks against a board member, district employee, or student. And speaking of students, we do have one student comment. So, Emma, I'm in a pronoun stra-- is it Arseneau? Is that right? Okay, welcome. So, if you can just toggle on the mic so the green light comes on, you'll be ready to go. And Secretary Eastep will time you, and everyone gets three minutes. At 30 seconds, she'll show up the yellow card signaling you to complete your public comment, and then you'll be completed the red card.
All right, thank you. Hi, my name is Emma Arseneau. I'm a senior at Celine High School. I'm a co-president of the Students Against Racism Club at SHS, a co-coordinator for Celine Student Board for Diversity and Inclusion, and I sit on the Youth Council for the Washington Intermediate School District. I'm speaking here tonight on behalf of fellow students who have announced their support of Celine's proposed transgender policy, which will provide transgender and gender non-conforming students with a safe and inclusive learning environment. In just the past 22 hours, the following 111 students have voiced their support for this policy. Sam Calzac, Sahil Thuma, Jason Chen, Kiran Dean, Mario Sheha, Ritham Sen, Caroline Klein, Ben Faulkner, TJ Friedholm, Amode Telakar, Connor Myers, Joseph Chen, Kate Schmidt, Scarlett Savage, Ally Burlingame, Linnea Pakwin, Nick Comfort, Izzy Powers, Enzo Hale, Annabelle Kwan, Vivian Barrett, Angie Ling, Karina Garduno, Abby Lem, Lilly Capello, Kaylee Jarvey, Zachary Miller, Anna Adnan, Elena Sutherland, Wyatt Sawa, Jack Savage, Sia Argawal, Abby Dooley, Allison Plaut Snyder, Caitlin Ackerman, Luca Ernest, Eleanor Roth, Ishan Mandirata, Amelia Hayes, Quinn Collins, Sophia Arseneau, Ashley Gerber, Francesca Hale, Cal Levos, Jacob Katzenita, Emily Eitman, Leah DeCaro, Gabby Zender, Delaney Lee, Sarah Renner, Nora McGillicuddy, Blake Woodrow, Erin Foscos, Kate Stemmer, Ariana Alexander Hayward, Ethan Summerlin, Shelby Salome, Abigail Hurst, Olivia Benn, Victoria Whedon, Cadence Waldrop, Adam Singer, Tricia Filbrin, Asia Harris, Carson Caldwell, Melina, Sirta Polus, Callahan Miltonberger, Jesus Cardoso, Avery Carroll, Ashton Davis, Ashna Argawal, Jesse Zhang, Lily Dirksen, Catalina Rios, Vida Castria, Kristen Kennard, Olivia Kunoff, Cameron Crawford, Geneva Kelman, Cal Road, Lucy Tuckerman, Luke Crowner, Mariana Perez, Chikama Ajiki, Lucy Sweeney, Penelope Durning, Caroline Clark, Elise Stevens, Kayella Fleming, Kaylee Eller, Gage LaFleur, Vivian Zegreen, Quinn Allman, Piper James, Jeff Kendall, Sam Irwin, Elizabeth Tessier, Gabe Lindeman, Sanai Moniford, Megan Zahn, Kaylee McClellan, Avery McClellan, Luke Johnson, Ellie Warden, Katie Holmes, Ava Heine, Mia Poppink, Ben Kazowski, Leah Alderink, Lauren Pickett, and Katie Farrell.
Thank you. That was close. All right. Emma, thank you for your comments. The next public comment are adults. This is a group, and they requested to come as a group. Per policy, they can come in a group up to five individuals, and they do have five individuals. This is the Celine Parents and Friends of Transgender Students. And if Dave Rosenfeld, since you filed this, if you could call up-- it can be in whatever order you all would like.
I think David A. Ward is going to go first.
Okay, David. Thank you. So, it'll be up to 15 minutes. So, again, three minutes per person. Whenever you're ready.
Thank you. The policy that you're considering tonight has been attacked on grounds that protecting transgender children goes against the laws of God and science. I won't insult your intelligence by bothering to address those points. It's also been challenged in the community on the grounds that protecting children's privacy is a violation of parents' rights. And I can understand people's confusion on that point, so I want to talk a little bit about that. Now, personally, I value parents' rights deeply, and I've spoken before this board before about the importance of parents' rights. But upholding parents' rights should never take precedence over the safety of children in our schools. This policy allows the schools to protect trans kids within the context of the school even when those children don't feel comfortable or don't feel safe disclosing their gender identity to their parents. Now, what do I mean by feeling safe? In an ideal world, every trans child would be as loved and affirmed by their family as mine is and by the kids of the other people that you're going to hear tonight are. But that is not the reality that we live in, and the facts are sobering. Eight percent of transgender young people who are outed to their families are kicked out of their parents' houses, many of those under the age of 15. Of those who aren't kicked out, another 10% run away because they're afraid of what's going to happen to them at home. Among those who are kicked out of their homes, 74% become homeless, 66% attempt suicide, 33% are trafficked into sex work. As adults, kids who are rejected by their families are more likely to be living in poverty. They're more likely to have severe psychological distress and psychological disorders, and they run twice the risk of their peers who have been accepted of contracting HIV. Now, even among that almost 20% of kids who aren't forced to leave their homes, many of them still face a lot of hatred and abuse at home after being outed. 27% are forbidden to wear clothes consistent with their gender identity. 14% are sent to conversion therapy, which is very detrimental to people's psychological development for the purpose of convincing them that they're not trans. And 10% of those kids who aren't kicked out of their homes face physical violence and abuse from members of their families. Nobody is in a better position to decide whether their family is going to be supportive or not than the child themselves. And the policy as it's currently written acknowledges that. Allowing the school to unilaterally inform parents without the consent of the child is only going to create a big equity issue. It'll do a great job of protecting kids like mine who are supported at home, but it's going to make things less safe for kids who don't feel that they are supported at home because they are not going to want to come out to the school for fear of being exposed. So, I urge each one of you to consider how it would weigh on your conscience, to think of the very real possibility that the school could be sending any trans child home to face those odds of rejection, of abuse, of homelessness, and yes, even death in a home where they have told you, the school, that they're not safe. All in the name of parents' rights. Thank you.
David, thank you for your comments. Who would you like to have go next to the group?
Tiffany Alexander.
Okay, Tiffany. Yeah, it'll be the same three minutes for each of them. Thanks. Whenever you're ready.
Hi. So, hi, everybody. I'm going to address basically the same issue, and when I do address some of the things my husband said that they were not going to address, it is not because I'm insulting your intelligence. So, I want to talk about why student privacy is incredibly important, particularly in this case. What we're really talking about, and nobody likes to say this because it's so ugly, but what we're really talking about is hatred. That's what this all boils down to. And you've heard them tell you that in this room. Let's start with against the laws of biology and man. What is that? That's subhuman. Let's go to defective. What is that? What do you do with something that's defective? You throw it in the garbage. You send it back to where it came from. You don't keep it. Born of sin. What's born of sin and abomination? Where do we send those? We've heard these phrases over and over and again, and you can go listen to them on tape or read them in any history book because those exact phrases have been used over and over and over again, and they used them here in your boardroom. If you violate these kids' privacy, that's what you're sending them into. That's just what you know about. That's what they're willing to say with you in the room. And what were people most enthusiastic about? Those comments. The least hateful remark you heard got the least amount of applause. The more hateful, the more they cheered. That's an endorsement. Now, ask yourself, I believe the majority of you are parents. Would you ever send your child into that? Would you send your child into a space where you know they're not even going to be valued? Okay? You know they're not going to be valued, that they're not even safe. No, you wouldn't. It's a rhetorical question. You would never do that to your kid. Don't do it to these kids. Don't do that. If a child tells you, "I am not safe," it is your job as their educators to believe them because you don't know what you're sending them into. They do. They know. They live there. Listen to them. Parents do have rights, and I support parent rights, but not at the sacrifice of the safety of the child. These children are begging you to have a place to come, to talk to you about who they are because they can't do it at home. Okay? They can't. Now, everybody has a lot to say about trying to persuade you, but I don't think that's what we need to do. I think you guys know all the facts and have all the information. I think you care about these kids. I think you're also trying to hear other voices. But that's what circles me back to hate. We don't indulge hate, and that's what this is. Would you send your baby into a space where they are being called against the laws of biology, subhuman, defective? Throw it in the garbage. Throw it away because that's what we do with defective things. Or born of sin and abomination? Ask yourself that when you go to pass this policy today. Every moment wasted for this policy not being passed is another child who will not come to their counselor, to their teacher, maybe not even a friend because they're going to be too afraid that they'll report it to the school. If you do that, you will create an equity issue because the only children supported will be the children like mine who are supported at home. They need you too. These kids need you more. That's pretty much all I have to say. I'm asking you to follow these students, not me. This is best practices, and this is what the students are telling you. If they tell you they're not safe, I'm begging you, believe them. Thank you.
Thank you. Tiffany, thank you for your comments. Dave?
Josh.
Josh, okay. Thank you. Whenever you're ready.
Hi, my name's Josh Spitz. I'm the proud parent of two girls in Celine, a cisgender sixth grader at the middle school, and a transgender fourth grader at Heritage. I'm here to voice my support for the proposed transgender and gender non-conforming students policy. I'm actually a professor in physics down the street at the University of Michigan. Let me tell you a little secret about physics. The key concept in physics, really in all of science, is incredibly simple. Don't fool yourself. That's it. That's all of science in three little words. Words. Don't fool yourself. What does that mean? It means that even if you have what you think is a good, strong, well-thought-out, perhaps even intuitive hypothesis, and perhaps one in which you would really like to be true, you need to consider the data, whether that data is consistent with your hypothesis or not. So, here's a hypothesis for you. Bullying isn't a problem anymore. Or perhaps even, bullying isn't a problem in Celine Area Schools. That's a nice and interesting hypothesis. It's convenient. Makes me feel warm and fuzzy and proud to live in Celine. I just love for that hypothesis to be correct. Unfortunately, we can't fool ourselves on this one. We mustn't fool ourselves. We've seen the data. I won't reel off the stats, but you've heard them here before. Bullying is incredibly common, and student outcomes are severely affected by it. And guess what else? I hate to break it to you, but Celine isn't special. We've heard from parents and students in Celine at many of these meetings. That's data. We know that bullying is happening all the time. We know that kids are being pushed to the edge in Celine, and I personally have many data points from my own experiences in high school, from the wrestling mat, the locker room, the hallway, the classroom. You remember high school? The toxic masculinity, the intimidation, the one-upsmanship, the F-slurs, using gay as a synonym for uncool, the glares, the giggles, the pointing. So, please don't fool yourself into thinking that we live in some magical corner of the world where bullying isn't a thing. It still is, and frankly, based on the firsthand data from Celine students and parents, I'm not at all convinced that much has changed since we were all in high school. The policy in front of you takes an important step towards a transgender inclusive school culture and will thwart bullying. Simply put, implementation of the policy will directly help trans kids, and frankly, they need your help. Before I end, I'd like to leave you with just a related thought. Minds can be changed, and our culture can improve and become more inclusive. It has. According to Gallup, U.S. approval of interracial marriage between black people and white people went from 48% in 1996 to 94% today. By the way, how absurd is it that the majority of Americans didn't approve of black people marrying white people in 1996? That's unbelievable. Another interesting one, U.S. approval of gay marriage has gone from 27% in 1996 to 70% today. Our culture is changing, but don't fool yourself into thinking that the work is done. It's not, not even close. The policy in front of you directly helps kids, which is fantastic, but it may also actually change some minds and improve the overall culture in Celine beyond even the schools. Thanks for all you do. You are making my daughter's life and making her like her better, and I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Josh. Thank you for your comments. Three minutes for the group.
Eighty minutes left. Seven or two left.
Okay. All right, got it. Kevin, thanks. Whenever you're ready.
I'll try to be brief. Good evening, Board of Education members. My name is Kevin Camero-Sulak. If you didn't know, I've been a Celine resident for 22 years, a city council member, and a proud father of a trans, non-binary son. He is a student in the district, and I have a daughter that graduated in 2019. I've seen a lot that has happened in Celine and in Celine schools. I am here to voice my strong support for the transgender--
Kevin, mic.
Is that better? Wow. So, I'm here to voice my strong support for the transgender and gender non-binary student policy. Now, you have listened to plenty of community input, many, many, many emails, I'm just venturing to guess, regarding this policy. I just want you to know I appreciate all your time and energy spent on this policy and all the work that you do. So, the Policy Committee has been working diligently on this for several months. The school attorneys have reviewed it. The policy has been completed with a thorough and transparent process, as well as students and school staff that have voiced their support. This is a comprehensive policy that would have protected my son and will help protect others from bullying, harassment, and potential assault. Now, we've already discussed plenty of the data that's been verified, and we know that medical, psychological, and education professionals support this. This is a measure that will help create inclusivity, affirming, and a safe environment for all students. For all students. I thank you for your time.
Kevin, thank you for your comments.
Do we still have a minute?
So, I guess that's 30 seconds, Susan.
Do we got a minute?
Fifteen seconds.
I'll be quick. I'm Dave Rosenfeld, and my pronouns are he/him/his. So much has already been said. So much thought and effort has gone into bringing us to where we are at this moment, and now you all have a very important decision before you. As a matter of fact, I would go so far as to say that it could even be a life-saving decision. I ask you to let that sink in for a moment. The decision you make here today could literally mean the difference between life and death for a Celine student or students at some point in the future, and I have great faith and confidence--
Thank you, Dave.
--you will make the right decision. Thank you.
I'm sorry to cut you off. Thank you to the group for the comments. We are going to move to parent Jason Staphney. Jason, did I pronounce your name correctly?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Whenever you're ready, and just don't forget to toggle the mic.
I think it's on, yeah. Jason Staphney, he/him, parent of two daughters, one that is trans in Celine Area Schools. So, Susan B. Anthony voted in the 1872 presidential election. She was arrested and convicted of voting illegally, sentenced to pay a fine of $100. In 1915, William Warley purchased land in Louisville, Kentucky, but was not allowed to live there because the city ordinance prohibited black residents. Just prior to her high school graduation in 1942, Aiko Yoshinaga was pulled aside and told by her principal, "You're not getting your diploma because you people bombed Pearl Harbor," soon after she was sent to an internment camp. In 2008, Abercrombie and Fitch declined to hire Samantha Ilaf because the hijab she wore as a declaration of her Muslim faith violated their dress code. In 2014, Gavin Grim listened to parents at a school board meeting in Virginia call him a freak. He was required to use a unisex bathroom for the remainder of his high school career. After graduation, even after his birth certificate and Virginia State ID card were legally designated male, the school board refused to provide him with a transcript that matched his birth certificate. So, all of his transcripts to colleges and potential employers read female. A policy protecting transgender and gender non-conforming kids is part of a much broader responsibility. It's about civil rights, equal protection under the law, and basic human dignity and respect. As we've seen time and again, in the absence of policies that protect our most vulnerable in the communities, the legal penalties to them can be severe and sometimes absurdly cruel. There are always reasons given by those in opposition, such as, "Our community isn't ready for this. It's for their own protection, and this will lead to other problems." These are smokescreens for fear and bigotry. The only reason to vote or speak out against this policy would be if you do not believe trans and gender non-conforming people have the right to exist exactly as they are. Make this vote unanimous. Don't let the children in our community see that any person of responsibility to their schools would deny them the right to perform the most basic of human functions, going to the bathroom or changing clothes in a place that fits their gender. Let our children know that every school staffer will treat them with the respect they deserve using their proper names and pronouns. Create a safer environment to report bullying and consequences for it. Let everyone know Celine Schools are a safe place to be yourself.
Jason, thank you for your comments. Next, we have parent Dawn Kraus.
Hi, everyone. President Steben, Board Trustees, my name is Dawn Kraus. I'm she/her. I'm a Celine grad, resident city council member, and proud stepmom of a trans child whose mom and sister are in the audience tonight. I wish to speak in support of the proposed trans policy that you'll be considering this evening. Gender fluidity is not new. Anyone with a cursory knowledge of history knows this. Humans identify all over the LGBT continuum, and since humans evolved, they have walked among us. And until the day we no longer have this planet to call our own, they will continue to do so. What is new, at least in recent, modern history, is that as a society of civilized people, we are learning how best to support our gender-fluid friends, family members, students. In turn, this increases the chances they feel safe to come out and live their most authentic life. In addition, the academic research surrounding is growing and documenting just how important having proper supports in place so that they can realize their full potential safely. I'm a proud alum of Celine Area Schools, class of 1988. Moved away, returned for the things that are wonderful about Celine. When I think of where we were as a city and where we've come, I'm so encouraged. There is more work to do to make Celine safe for everybody, and the decision up before you tonight is part of that. The one thing we don't want to do is go backwards. We can't afford to. Our children can't afford to. I'd like to close by reading a small note from my stepchild Mason, who I am very close with. I hit the stepmom lottery with my stepchildren, and I appreciate their mom sharing them with me. This is from Mason, who is a senior at CMU. Growing up, I felt alienated. There was a distinct disconnect between myself and the world around me. Sure, in grade school, I had a couple of friends that generally, and was generally liked, but there was always something missing. I am transgender, and the moment I accepted that and started transitioning, both socially and physically, my entire world changed. I changed for the better. For the first time in my life, I felt seen. But my ability to do this, to be myself, is a direct result of the environment I am in. My college professors in my college all have policies regarding pronouns and chosen names. The student organizations I am in have anti-discrimination clauses in their constitutions that specifically and explicitly include LGBT folks. I am able to be me and to be happy because of the policies-- I am able to be me and to be happy because of the policies and the protections that were put into place before I got here. Sometimes I think about how I spent my middle school and high school years, and I imagine what it would have been like if I could have been... Hi, how many more minutes does that mean? If I could have been myself then, because my high school had no such policies, no protections, no education. Anyone associated with the LGBT community in any way was mocked and ridiculed. You have the power to change lives tonight. You have the power to save lives tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Dawn, thank you for your comments. Our next parent, public comment, is Cory Belote.
Hello. Cory Belote, she/her/hers. You've heard from me before, and you know that I want this policy, and I want to share a little story with you. My oldest, Liam, who's in the back, had just turned two when I found out I was having twins. My mother was there holding him in the room when we saw two babies during that ultrasound. I was both excited and terrified. That afternoon, I alternated between laughing hysterically and crying. My Catholic mother, yes, I am Catholic, said, "God doesn't give you what you can't handle." And I said, "Well, God hasn't been watching me lately." But like most moms, or all moms, she was right. God doesn't make mistakes. God gave me Evan. Because of Ev, I have met this amazing group of people and kids. Because of Ev, I am standing here before you tonight, fighting for this policy and these kids. God gave me two others. God gave me Liam and Owen, and they are here too. They have many friends who have signed that petition from the students of that many list of numbers of names who were listed. I've got parents here whose students couldn't be here because they're home studying for the SAT that they're taking tomorrow from the lacrosse team here. We've got football parents. We've got robotics parents. We've got friends here, and God gave them to me too. But what about the kids who aren't here tonight, who couldn't be here for whatever reason? Are they too scared to be here? Are they scared to tell their parents? Are they scared to tell their friends in school? That is also why I am here, for the kids here and the kids who can't be. We don't know what their reasons are for why they're not here. Maybe if they told their parents, their parents would join them up here. Maybe they're already here and just don't know. Maybe they're in the back room, or maybe they're out on the street praying. What about those kids? We don't know why those kids aren't ready to tell their parents, but whatever their reason, it is their story to tell. That is where you all come in. You have to pass this policy to protect the kids who are out and those who are not, those who are still afraid for whatever reason. You have to protect them by not outing them. They have the right to come out when they are ready, not the school. It's their story. God put me here on this side of the podium, and we put you in those seats. As we know, God doesn't make mistakes. So do what you are here for and protect the kids, the ones here tonight and the ones who can't be. Vote yes tonight and pass the transgender policy. Thank you.
Cory, thank you for your comments. Our last public participation for the first part will be from Lindsay Anderson, parent.
Hi, my name is Lindsay Anderson. My pronouns are she/her/hers, and I have two children that attend school in the district, one of whom is transgender. I wanted to come before you tonight to share a story of how Celine has supported my daughter so far, to let you know that this type of policy really does what it's intended to do. My daughter and I have worked with her school principals to ensure that she has a teacher every year who is supportive and affirming of her identity, who feels comfortable supporting her with her classmates if anything were to come up. And she has so far experienced no bullying on the basis of her gender identity, despite the fact that she often comes out to her entire class because she feels supported by her teacher. Last June, during Pride Month, her teacher read a book about a transgender kid to her class, and three of her classmates shared with her that they also knew or had family members who were trans or non-binary, after she was brave enough to come out after the reading. I want that same thing for all of the other trans and gender nonconforming and non-binary kids in this school district. I want them to feel as confident as she is in her classroom. I want her, I want them to have the same exact experience at school, even if they can't have it at home with their families. We know that statistically speaking, transgender, non-binary, and gender nonconforming people who do not have supportive families face much more dire statistics, as many of the parents here tonight have already read to you. School can be a safe place for them. It can be a place where they can be their authentic selves, they can explore. Please, please, please provide that for them. I ask that you pass this policy as it is and do this for our children. Thank you.
Lindsay, thank you for your comments. Moving on to item number four on our agenda, response to previous public comment. As some of the parents had stated, yes, we have been receiving a lot of emails largely around two topics, our transgender and nonconforming policy that will be a second reading tonight, so we will have that discussion soon, and also our sex ed advisory board, which is not on the agenda for this evening. I just have a small update there. It was voted and passed out of committee last week and will be coming on a future agenda, tentatively scheduled for October twenty-sixth, pending the handoff from the board to Dr. Lodge and making sure that they have all of the content ready to come to the board. So just a little update there. Moving on to item five, revisions or approval of agenda. Items may be added or deleted from the meeting agenda, and/or the order of items may be changed at the request of an individual board member or the superintendent. The agendas must be approved before proceeding further. Could I please entertain a motion to approve the agenda as printed?
So moved.
Brad, thank you.
Support.
Susan, was that you?
Yeah.
Okay. Susan, thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries seven-zero. Student showcase. Julian, would you like to introduce our guest?
So we have our very own Miss Celine here, Haley Melanzack, and she has quite a bit to share, along with many accomplishments and is one to be highly respected.
Hi, Haley, welcome.
Hi.
I am very glad you wore the tiara. I wanted to see the crown.
Oh, thank you.
Whenever you're ready, go right ahead.
Okay. So, thank you for having me tonight. My name's Haley Melanzack. I'm the Miss Celine twenty-twenty-one, and I'm so glad to be talking to you tonight about things I've already done and things I'm looking forward to do in the community. So, a little bit about me, my parents are Tim and Veronica Melanzack. I'm a senior at Celine High School. A few things I do, I'm the class president, I'm the High Five Club co-president, I'm the FCCLA co-president, and I do lots of other clubs at the school. I'm also the golf team captain, and I play on a softball team, and I like to be involved in athletics clubs and kind of academic clubs as well, like DECA, so, yeah. So, a couple things I've already done as Miss Celine, starting out before the pageant, actually, with Celine Area Social Services, we did this, like food drive, kind of, it was a drive-through pickup for food pantry items at a local church, which is the pictures on the slides. We did Stuff the Bus, which was a great Summer Fest edition. It was really fun at Steadfast Chiropractic Center, and that was a really fun event. We got to load the bus with school supplies to take to Celine Area Social Services, and that helped a lot of kids in need. So then Friday night, before the pageant on Saturday, we had contestant introduction on the stage by Mary O'Brien Marle, and that was really fun. We all got to go up on stage, introduce ourselves, and talk a little bit, and then the pageant itself. So, the pageant was an awesome experience. I got to meet a bunch of new girls, and they were all so awesome and talented. A few pictures on the board, the one is from, I won the top interview award, and then the other one was at the end of the pageant with me, the first runner-up and the second runner-up. Then after the pageant, my first event as Miss Celine was kind of small. I got to go over to Zippy's for the free sundae ice creams with the Lions Club, so I got to meet some new people in the community and hand out some free ice cream. Then I went to the Pleasant Ridge Open House, and it was really fun talking to all the little kids. They were super excited. A lot of them called me a princess, so it was pretty fun. And then I just kind of got to talk to other parents in the community as well. Then most recently was the homecoming parade, so I got to ride in my grandparents convertible, actually, and in the homecoming parade and kind of just waved to community members, which was super fun. And I actually got to crown my best friend, Olivia Diebley, as homecoming queen, so it was a really fun night. And then most recently, actually, was the scarecrow contest, so make sure to look for the Miss Celine scarecrow in town with all the different ones. Ours is a little princess because the theme was red, white, and blue, let your patriotism shine through, which was a cool little theme, and that's why we have our red, white, and blue Miss Celine. There's lots of different future events up there, I'm not going to list them all, but just a couple. We have lots of different events with Celine Area Social Services coming up, especially the Thanksgiving one, I'm really looking forward to that, and donating meals to families in Celine. We have Toys for Tots to make some annual ornaments around Christmas time, and then the Christmas parade. Lots of different things in the spring as well, the Martin Luther King Junior event, the Rec Center Daddy Daughter Dance, the list goes on, but basically, I'm just really excited for this opportunity in this upcoming year as Miss Celine to kind of just continue to be involved in the community, but this time is more of a leader, more of a role model, especially to other younger women. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Haley. If you want to stay up here for just a minute, I don't know if anybody has any comments or questions for you. I just wanted to say it is no shock to me that you won an interview competition. For those of you who don't know, Julian and Haley opened our school district this year, so there's always an event where all of our staff gets together, hears some messages from us, and this year it was student-led, so they did an excellent job. And one of the, I like many things about your presentation, but the strong, strong service mentality and servant leadership heart that you show is incredibly important and incredibly important attribute in our student body, so thank you, thank you for your service. Any other questions or comments for Haley? Yeah?
I was just going to ask, Haley, I know that there was, I don't know if it was a year or two years where there wasn't a Miss Celine pageant, and then it came back last year.
Yeah.
And I know it's an endeavor that many of our community members are hoping continues for a long, long time, so what would you say to invite others to participate in the future so that they would start thinking about it now in anticipation of next year?
I think definitely a good way to spread the word about it is kind of just as Miss Celine, like be at all the community events and just different, like, school events and just as many things I can go to as possible, because being present is probably the best way to spread the word and kind of just talk to different people about it. Like I said, I'm a really involved person, so I can tell different people in different clubs and different organizations and just kind of spread the word and be like, "This is a great thing, you should try it out." And I'm sure a lot of people will follow those steps and choose to do it as well, because it's just a good opportunity. Even if you don't end up on the Miss Celine court, it's still a really good time, and it's just a really cool thing to go through the interview process, and it's just good experience in general. Thank you.
I'm just going to be selfish for a second and give a Link Crew shout-out, so I appreciate you being a Link Crew member, all right? That's a big deal, and it's you giving your time, and I could tell that you give your time freely and willingly, so thank you for doing that.
Yes, thank you. I love Link Crew. All right. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Oh, go ahead, yep. Moving on to scheduled reports, Continue to Learn Plan from Dr. Lodge.
Thank you very much. It's easier for me to present here and click, so I figured that out. At any rate, very happy to be here tonight to talk to you a little bit about the Continue to Learn Plan. However, before I do that, I do want to say congratulations to Haley. She is really talented and is so good at bringing people together. She's really a unifier. She has brought people together in so many different clubs and organizations. It's really impressive, and I really thank her for her work. With that said, so Continue to Learn Plan update. We're going to talk a little bit about where we're at with COVID right now. As you see in this chart here, we are in an uptick. Michigan has actually experienced increase in COVID cases, while a lot of places in the country are starting to stabilize or go down. So we do need to keep aware of that and watch that closely as we move forward, but you're going to see in this next slide that we've been doing a very good job, along with the community. The community is a big part of this, in that our dashboard is relatively low with both COVID cases and students in quarantine. And again, I'll talk over and over again about our primary goal this year, keep kids in school in five days a week of in-person instruction. Spoke last time a little bit about this test-to-stay program, which largely allows us to quarantine students in school, those that are in the unvaccinated range, by testing three times a week, and that is largely because we have such an incredible nursing staff that is able to keep up with that demand, and therefore, we are doing a very good job of keeping students in school, and just feel that our staff and our community are doing a terrific job with this. And as I walk the buildings, it shows, students are really happy to be in school and, you know, doing a good job wearing masks and supporting our protocols. So now we're going to talk a little bit about teaching and learning tonight. I keep putting this slide up because we keep talking about how a lot of our goals lead back to the Celine area schools' compass. Reinvigorating the focus on the compass, our graduate profile, personalized learning educational experiences, social-emotional support, and this connection to real-world experiences. Presentation tonight is solely focused on the Southwest Washington Consortium, our CTE program. You're really going to see that fourth bullet point amplified here. Watch for the real-world experiences, they happen all the time in our CTE program. So we've got a new logo, which is cool. It's our SWWC logo under the leadership of Dr. Ryan Rowe, who's doing an incredible job right now, not only expanding programming, but really looking at what we're doing well and really taking a lens of how can we expand programming across the county, not just at Celine schools, so that students have opportunities in lots of different areas. You look at the different programs we offer, video production, Auto Tech's a real key program for us. You see students that are visiting the fair and highlighting programs there. It's great to see, we're really proud of what all of our students are doing in this program, and we talk a lot about preparing tomorrow's essential employees today. It's our job not only to prepare students for four-year college prep programs, but also look at, you know, which students are interested in trades, technical programs, because there are a lot of really good, high-paying jobs in these fields that we need to continue to steer students towards areas that they're really passionate about. Engineering and Robotics. Here's an example of a class that isn't offered at Celine High School. It's up in Chelsea, and it's fabulous. It's connected in an engineering robotics program in a state-of-the-art facility right next to the high school, and some of our students bus to get there, some of the Celine students, and so do students from Dexter and some of the other districts. But this is a tremendous program, and you look at that third bullet point, that students enrolled in the engineering robotics program can attain certification as a FANUC, and I had to make sure we all knew what that stands for, Fuji Automatic Numerical Control Certified Robot Operator. It's really the biggest robotics manufacturing company, and it's based in Rochester, Michigan, and so students have great opportunities to get involved in this program and great career possibilities. um, students have great opportunities to get involved in this program and great career possibilities. Building trades, we've talked over and over about this. This is our Habitat for Humanity project that was really strong throughout the pandemic. We had students on-site at a home in Ypsilanti. And they were working very hard to make sure that they were building up a house backwards. Basically, tore out the inside and then allowed students opportunities to see what it is to really instruct and, um, construct. Look at electrical, um, drywall, all of that as they built this house up. And then they turned it over to a family in need, which is just incredible. The students that were in this program were always diligent about being on time and working through the pandemic. Always eager to be there and it's just terrific. Advanced Manufacturing. This is Mr. Vassiloff in this territory. And we look at expansion in courses called SIM, Computer Integrated Manufacturing. We have a wonderful space with state-of-the-art, um, CAD, uh, computer machines, integrating manufacturing. We have all sorts of tools to support this program. And it really does provide a strong connection with kids getting internships at various employers around the county. The SWWC Open House is something we're advertising significantly for. You're going to see a QR code on your desk that talks about this event on November 30th. We're advertising it extensively because we think it's very, very important for families to be aware and we want people to visit. You look at what the structure is going to be and the, um, Preparing Tomorrow's Essential Employees Today. It's going to be at the high school on November 30th. We're hoping that all of you have a chance to stop by. Dr. Rowe's getting it all organized and doing a terrific job of advertising. And again, this is going to be 10th, 11th and 12th grade students from all the consortium districts that are invited. So we want parents, guardians, the students themselves to come through, venture into our labs, see what these spaces look like. And then the other neat thing about this, this year is business and industry leaders will be present to be able to talk to kids about what are some career opportunities here? Because it's one thing to talk about, you know, taking a welding class, but it's another thing to talk about the vast array of opportunities you have in a weld, for a welding career, for example. And so there will be an opportunity for that as well. Here's the cool flyer. We're going to be promoting it, uh, often. And we're getting ramped up because November 30th is a ways out, but we really want to see a, a big turnout because we think this is really important as we continue to expand programming across, uh, Celine High School and the county. We talk about the compass. Uh, CTE and SWWC is a great example of how all of this plays naturally with our four Cs areas in, uh, communication, collaboration, creativity and critical thinking. And then we also talk about the four pillars of the compass, the light blue areas, pedagogy. The teaching and learning environment is set up very well for all of these hands-on experiences. Tech integration happening all the time. We have technology-aligned resources in all of our CTE programs that feed into the success of the students. Our learning spaces. You see labs that allow for this kind of work to take place. That's a big part of changing what the classroom looks like. If you want students to do hands-on learning, you got to provide the proper environment. And finally, the community. There's so many opportunities for the students to then go out and get internships and also, um, consider a career path. So, we're very excited about the direction of the CTE program under the direction of Dr. Ryan Rowe. And that's it. I'd be happy to take questions.
Thanks. Any questions or comments for Dr. Latch? Brad?
I just have one. So I'm curious. How is it determined who owns what program? Like, for example, you said robotics is in Chelsea, but it was obvious this past summer, we have a really, really healthy robotics program here. So how's it determine like who has this program and that program and what have you?
Well, that's part of the expansion that we're working on. We're trying to actually look at other buildings that have more space and, and expand out. Because one of the issues at Celine High School is, yes, we want to expand programming, but we don't have as much room. But they do have more room in Chelsea, Lincoln. We're even talking Ypsilanti down the road. Do they want to be joining as a partner? So, there is this space issue that we have to look towards. In terms of who gets into what program, there's slotted out slots that people get and then each school district fills those slots. And if they can't, then they get moved to another district. But, there is this, um, need to look at expansion based on space available. And that's what, and then there's also this, this business of making sure that we're being equitable with the sort of west side of the county programs and the east side, which is largely why Celine was sort of the hub initially. But we need to expand because we think there's a lot of value here and that more kids want to participate. Therefore, we now need to find the spaces.
I thought the program last year with the Habitat for Humanity House and just the, the work that students did, I thought not just on constructing, but also, you know, potentially inspecting or, um, renovating. Like, those are skills that go even beyond what the construction used to entail. So, I loved the innovation and seeing how that came together. I, I also thought the partnership with Habitat for Humanity was beautiful. So, I'm wondering if that's continuing this year?
Yeah, we'll work, we'll work to do a different type of Habitat for, for Humanity House. That's been changed by Dr. Ryan Rowe. He, he came in and changed the concept around to, to be that. So we will continue with that. And it is great to see these different opportunities in the community. One other thing I want to mention is that I'm part of Celine Rotary. And Rotary the other day was talking about, um, aviation and, and Willa Run Airport and how some of the Rotarians are connected there. We now have a field trip set up with seven CTE students who are interested in aviation-related fields to go see the Willa Run Airport as part of a Rotary meeting. So it, it's great to watch the community. If we ask or if we find opportunities, they're always willing to, you know, showcase what opportunities exist for a career path for kids.
Well, if you need some support in aviation, I happen to know someone. So, let me know. Both corporate and commercial, he could, uh, he could lend some, um, some info. But, uh, no, I, I just want to congratulate Dr. Rowe. And I know that that was a program that was building for many, many years, but I think he came in and he, um, you know, made some, made some moves and also, uh, collaborated with some partnerships to really just push us to the next level. And I know that that's just going to continue. So, congratulations to Dr. Rowe and his partners too.
Yeah, I was recently meeting with, um, some of the superintendents for Washington area, basically throughout Washington County. And they are a little envious of the fact that we are so centrally located and we have so many resources. And I, I appreciate you mentioning the expansion east because we really need to do that. Yps, YPSI has started and they would love to have more of our programs. And, uh, also about the Habitat for Humanity, I've been on four of those builds in the past. And the fact they're refurbs is, doesn't diminish the amount of work and the amount of technical skill that the students learn. I've done everything from the basements up to the tippy-top of the roof. And there's always, it's, it's fascinating how much these kids will learn as a result of those, uh, projects. So, uh, thanks for, uh, thanks to Dr. Rowe too. I appreciate all his efforts.
Great. Anybody else? Thank you.
Candace says it.
Oh, oh yeah. I'm sorry Candace, go ahead.
Just a quick thing and you don't have to answer this now, but I'd love to see data on just the students entering into their career pathway and how many, you know, what percentage actually enter into the career that they trained in and through the program. That would be, that would be amazing to.
Yeah, there's no question that we do need to work on that. We've talked about figuring out how to track, um, random samples of our senior classes as they leave for two years after, five years after, seven years. Because that is a little bit of this unknown. We, we hear back from students about being prepared for college. What we often don't hear is what are they actually doing? And so, it is a, a good point and something that we are starting to work on in terms of tracking that progress.
Um, so, as a student, I've gotten to take some of these courses. Um, I took one, one class of welding and I feel like I'm a relatively sufficient welder.
Okay, good, good.
Uh, I just like to, I see Dr. Rowe a lot. I don't get a lot of chances to talk to him, but, um, on behalf of like, well, I'm a student obviously. And from being in these classes and being around students that take these classes, um, throughout, you know, your four years in high school, I see a lot of people coming back to take them. Um, and even if you get the chance, um, I don't really see myself becoming a welder in the future. But, you know, it's, it was just a fun class to be able to take and something I really wouldn't be able to experience otherwise. So, from a student pers- perspective, uh, it's super great to have it around and I haven't heard of a student that doesn't like it and doesn't even want to take a class like that. Everyone, everyone wants to have a chance to work with their hands. And it's awesome.
That's great. I'm a huge fan of, of those programs. I want to echo Jenny's sentiments for, for Dr. Rowe. I don't know if Ryan's here. I don't think he is. But, that whole team and on all of the students, I was so blown away at the community fair and seeing all of their, um, their hard work. So, uh, love that. Don't love the first half of your presentation. I can't wait till we don't have COVID presentations. That would be fantastic. Um, but, um, looking forward to the open house. Thank you. Alright. Um, moving on to our second scheduled report, uh, Finance Committee update with Trustee Valenti.
Alright, thank you. Finance Committee met, uh, five o'clock today. We just went over a couple items. One, very important student count. We're in the middle of student count right now. Started, uh, beginning of this month. Um, looks like we're down about a hundred students from last year, but it looks like we're stabilizing right around the 4,800 mark. We're going to be watching that very carefully as the count goes on. It's so crucial for us to keep an eye on that, uh, with our, the structure of our, our, uh, spending. Uh, we, we expect a student count. Those are the two drivers. Student count, per pupil funding that we get. That's, those are the drivers. So we have to really keep an eye on that. Where are we going to fall? We, we know we've, we've dropped about a hundred students. Are we stabilizing? That's what we're looking at. The other thing we looked at is, uh, ESSER III money, which is federal and state money coming into the schools. These carry tremendous amount of, uh, of, um, requirements to look at what we have to have to, uh, to spend the money. We have to track it. In this case, we've got a deadline coming up of December 15th to involve, uh, our spending plan. We have to involve a lot of stakeholders. Our Finance Department Assistant Superintendent Ausley is very busy trying to keep that track, uh, on track. So we meet all the requirements and we can get the money. So, that's an ongoing thing. Um, I think we're having a meeting on that November 1st as well. Yes, to keep track of that. Uh, those are the two primary items we talked about. So, we'll have a better idea on student count as in the coming weeks. Anything else?
No. Any, uh, any questions for Dennis? Alright. Great. Thanks Dennis. Um, moving on to action items. I'd like to please entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the September 14th, 2021 closed session for the purpose of discussing, discussing temporary COVID amendments to the existive, existing collective bargaining agreements between the Board of Education and Celine Area Schools as facilitated, facilitated by Assistant Superintendent Ellis.
So moved.
Jenny, thank you. Second?
Second.
Candace, thank you. Um, Susan, do you have the, um, the closed session minutes? And just so the public knows, closed session minutes are approved a little bit differently. They're not approved as part of our consent agenda. Um, they go into a sealed envelope that Betty Yankee keeps for us for one year. So, um, Secretary Eastep passes out seven copies of the closed session minutes. We review them and then move to vote. So it'll be just a couple minutes. It's not a race. And this is, um, this is a requirement of the Open Meetings Act for closed, uh, closed session minutes. And then Secretary Eastep will collect them and shred them and give the, uh, sealed envelope to Betty. If approved. Just let me know when you guys are ready. Everybody ready down here? Okay, moving to vote. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries 7-0. Um, Susan, if you can collect all seven and tabulate to make sure you have them and then, um, after, we can do the envelope to Betty after if you want. Okay, great. Moving on to our second action item. I'd like to please entertain a motion to approve the adoption of the transgender and gender non-conforming students policy as submitted by the Policy Committee.
So moved.
Candace, thank you. Second?
Second.
Brad, thank you. Uh, discussion. Um, would anyone on the Policy Committee like to say a few words?
Yeah, I would like to start. Um, so, today is the day that we, the Celine Board of Education, consider voting on the adoption of a policy that protects and supports transgender youth. A population that is more susceptible to bullying and harassment. You've heard at the last two meetings and by email that our community, our students, parents, teachers, staff, administrators and community members is overwhelmingly supportive of this policy. The Board proposed no changes during the first reading. And so here we sit, ready to hear any final comments and potentially, potentially put it to a vote. Before discussion, I would like to acknowledge the individuals who contributed to the creation of this policy. First, I'd like to thank Trustee Jones and Vice President McVeigh for serving on the Policy Committee and carefully weighing in on all aspects of the policy. I'm proud of the draft that came out of committee with unanimous support from the committee members. Secondly, I would like to thank the parents and students who contributed to the shaping of this policy. Without your input, we would not have been able to center the voices of the transgender and gender non-conforming, non-binary, non-binary students in this process. We appreciate your patience and dedication through the process and acknowledge the months and years that you have committed to making this happen. I'd like to point out that yesterday was National Coming Out Day. But I want to emphasize that today is a new day. Today, we have an opportunity to adopt this policy and send a message to our transgender, gender non-conforming and non-binary students. We are sending a message that you can be out in our schools. Um, you can seek support and we will support and welcome you here in this district and our community. With that, I would like to open the floor up for any comments or questions from the trustees.
Thanks Susan. And thank you to our, um, Policy Committee overall. Julian, did you raise your hand?
Did not.
Nope. Oh, Jenny? Okay, yeah, go ahead.
Um, I wanted to just say a few words because, um, I guess there's been some question, um, from the community about where, where board members stand. And so I want to be very clear about where I stand, um, tonight. Um, all of you know, it's not a secret that I, um, was a classroom teacher here for many, many years. And I often said to my kids that my number one job was to keep them safe. And, um, sorry, um, we wouldn't be here if our kids felt safe. If the anti-bullying and anti-harassment policy was enough, we wouldn't be here. So, this is, this is something that I feel strongly about for our kids and for their safety. But this hasn't been easy. And so I'll just say that a lot of my character and my faith has been called into question. And so I'm just going to say publicly, without violating like, you know, separation of church and state. I know who I am. My friends and my family know who I am. And I know whose I am. my family know who I am and I know whose I am. So, this weekend, someone asked me, um, what changed for me? What, what helped me to, to be more of an ally? Um, and so, I just want to share just one quick thing, um, with all of you. That earlier in my life, it was something that was far removed from me, that it was something that maybe I read about or heard about. But many of the kids who spoke here last week were my kids and are still my kids. Some of them accidentally called me mom sometimes. That's how close they are. When we say as teachers that they're our kids, they are our kids. So, what changed for me is that someone that I loved sat in front of me and told me who they were and told me what they needed from me. So, for the first time at that moment, it wasn't something that was far removed or something that I read about. It was someone that I loved and someone that needed to be loved. And so, that is what changed with me. Families invited me to be a part of their journey and invited me to ask questions and to know how I could be supportive to them. It's about humanity. It's about humankind. And it's about loving one another. So, I am asking that we consider one change in the policy. And that would be that I would like for the title of this policy to not have a negative connotation. I would propose that we change the "nonconforming" to "gender expansive."
I'd like to speak to that.
Oh, yeah, sure. I just, excuse me. Um, Jenny, I just want to thank you for your, for your comments. I know that was challenging. Yeah, Susan, go ahead, please.
Yes. Um, so, we have had people, um, request, um, with the change for, um, "non-binary", "gender expansive". Um, and so, just a little history, um, with Glisten and the national, um, what, the, the national, um, policy that we base this off of. Um, so, the National Center for Transgender Equality and Glisten partnered. And, um, when we started working on the policy this year, um, it did say "gender nonconforming". And just recently, we discovered, um, and, and we communicated with the parents about the terminology as well. And so, um, recently, uh, Glisten came out and said that they were changing the term, like, the word. And so, I did go through our policy. Um, and there eighteen times it says, uh, "gender nonconforming". So, I guess a question, um, would be if it's a technical change now or like a later time. Um, but, uh, that's kind of some, some history with that. But, a, and I think that's, um, something that our board and future boards, um, need to consider about language changing and evolving. And, um, so just being, um, aware of that and, um, yeah, being accurate and inclusive. Um, so, thank you for bringing that up.
And I just want to say too to the committee that it's no criticism on you. I did also read that this is new, uh, this is a change since even, it's within this twenty-twenty-one. And so, the reason why I preferred "gender expansive" and I would defer to anyone else who knows more about this than I do. But, um, I liked that it didn't have "non". I, I just appreciated that it was, it was not, uh, an "othering", um, so to speak. So.
Um, just real quick. Um, so, I believe it changed to "non-binary" versus "gender" expressive.
Okay, I saw both, I saw both, both in the, in the language. So, I'm, I would be fine with either. I, I know that it's new and it's different. I just would prefer that it not say "nonconforming", I guess.
Right. Jenny, I just wanted to thank, thank you for bringing that up. Um, and then Brad, I, I saw you had a comment. So, I just want to build off of what Jenny said really quickly. What I tried to do, uh, I had mentioned we have been receiving a lot of, um, I'm just going to be honest, overwhelming support, um, for, for this policy. Um, and also, um, important feedback from folks who, who know a little bit more than me about this, right? So, I, I also had a question about the, the title. Um, that was brought up by both parents and by a lot of staff. Um, and when I think about our staff and the, and the folks that need to operationalize a new policy, I think that that's an, an important piece of feedback. So, um, and to secretary Eastup's point, I, I know when we see Neola updates and we see other things, things are rapidly changing with all sorts of language. So, I like the idea of, um, keeping up to date and, and things like that. Brad, yeah, I'm sorry.
Oh, you're good. So, you know, I, I've said from the very beginning, I never hit this during, during campaign season, that this is important to me. And I support these students all the way. And, and the reality for me is that, you know, I, I, I give my support to this language change and I give it all the way. And, uh, so, I, I can go either way with it too. I can, you know, I, I can support "non-binary". I can support "gender expansive". I'll be honest with you, like, my knowledge of it is so super, like, that, I don't know which term is the better of the two. Um, and so, I, I guess I would want some, someone to back me on that and tell me which of those is better. But, um, you know, I, this language provide, you know, I, I think that utilizing either of those terms more clearly defines the language and the protections that we want to validate these students as human beings. And so, for me, I'm not kidding. It's just, this is a tremendously humanitarian moment. And I never want anybody to think, "nonconforming", like, you're important to us. We see you. We value you. And, uh, and so, I'll also say this. I'm the person at the table who is on record as saying, "I want a clean reading all the time". I, 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 I do. And, and I will tell you that this is important enough language to me to say that if we had a preponderance as a team, I won't say a word about that because this is what's best to do for our kids. And, and so, anyway, I want to make sure I say that out loud. And that's been important to me and I support this, this change.
Um, so, I, I'd like to, Brad, you had a, a good point. And I'm not on the policy committee and neither is Brad and, and neither is Jenny. So, I know the policy committee has been living with this document for quite a while. So, can we ask Candace, Michael, and Susan, um, on the language for the title? What, what their thoughts are? I would like to, like to hear.
Um, I can go. So, I'm okay with the, the, this current language is in alignment with the, the other policies that we modeled this off of, um, with what Glisten was be, before. So, I'm okay with, with, uh, the change though as well to make sure that we are in alignment with the current, the, the latest up-to-date language. And that would be "non-binary". I think having that Glisten policy to back it up would be, would be good to be in alignment with that. So, I would kind of lean more towards that language versus "gender expansive", but, um, yeah, so that would be my reasoning. Yep.
Michael or Susan, do you have any, any thoughts?
Yes. Um, yeah, I agree with the "non-binary" piece. Um, but I think, just trying to think because they, you know, nationally, like, I just did a search of the, the page and it, that doesn't come up. Um, so, I think, yeah, being, um, consistent. Um, I would like to, like I said, I think it's a technical change and, and switching out those words. Um, so, I think it's something either we can agree on tonight and move, like, whenever it goes through Neola, um, or something that, you know, as a committee, we talk about it and we come back and we're like, "Hey, there's a technical change in that. Be passed."
I did want to just read the definition of "nonconforming" just because I think, you know, we think of "nonconforming" as, um, you know, a negative connotation in some, some cases, but now I'm lost the definition. Here we go. Oh, no, that's not it. The version I have, for some reason, it's cut off.
Candace, are you looking for the, okay, you got it.
Yeah, for some reason, it's cut off on, on my copy here. So, thank you. Jenny saves the day. Um, so, "gender nonconforming, a term for people whose gender expression differs from the stereotypical expectations such as feminine boys or masculine, masculine girls and those who are perceived as androgynous. This includes people who identify outside traditional gender categories or identify as multiple genders. Other terms that can have similar meanings include gender diverse or gender expansive. Being gender nonconforming is distinct from being transgender." So, just wanted to read that definition because in some cases, "nonconforming" has been, been viewed in a negative way or in some way. So.
Additionally, um, since you mentioned that, I know our current committee draft has a very short "non-binary", "gender queer" definition. And so, looking at Glisten here, um, it's a couple of sentences. So, I don't know if that's something we want to make accurate as well if we're adopting that term. So, is that something you all would like need to read on the "non-binary" piece?
Would you like to read it to us?
Yes. So, um, our current draft says, um, gen, so, "non-binary", "gender queer", "terms used by those who identify with neither, both, or a combination of genders". The model policy says "non-binary", "a term used to refer to people whose gender identity is not exclusively male or female, including those who identify with a different gender, a combination of genders, or no gender. Non-binary may be considered a subset of transgender or distinct ident, a distinct identity. Other similar or more specific terms may include gender queer, gender fluid, agender, or two-spirit for Native American students."
And, and where was that definition from?
So, that's the, um, because they adopted the term "non-binary", so Glisten, um, so their model policy. Um, I just checked, um, because you had read our definition. Um, and I wanted to see what the difference was. Um, so, that's just a definition term of "non-binary". So, if we are using that consistently through the document, I think that's something that we should pop in the definitions.
So, it's from Glisten?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. And that's what we used with our current definitions.
Is it "gender expansive"?
No, I looked up expans, I did a search on expansive in the document and it wasn't there. Maybe they'll change it next year.
That's, that's possible.
I'll, I'll just say for the record, um, I think the people at Glisten do this every day. And so, if they're, if they're talking about "non-binary" and they're defining it that way, then, then that's, that's good for me. I, I would, I would take my, you know, suggested amendment for "gender expansive" and move it towards "non-binary" instead.
Okay. So, Jenny is removing her previous request. So, I'm not altering the motion at this point. Okay. Um, so, Jenny, you're saying leave the title as is?
So, I guess what I, I guess what I'm asking from the table is, do we want to change it now or do we want to change it later? Because I do think that it's important that we use current language and model that practice. And the current best practice says "non-binary" and we have a definition. So, we could make a motion tonight. I guess, how about this? If there's discussion, let's take discussion. If not, I'd like to make a motion that we change the title.
Oh, hang on one second. We have a motion on the table already.
Okay. Oh, 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 yes, yes, yes. Okay. So, I'd like to propose, I guess, that we discuss the non-changing, changing that language. Yeah.
Okay. So, here, here's a suggestion that I could make just procedurally. Um, we can see if, if we're moving towards consensus on, on that. And then, we would remove the motion, uh, from Candace, uh, that Brad seconded. And then, we would, um, write out the new language as part of a new motion. So, before we do all that, I would just want to make sure, um, Jenny, can you state the proposed title of the policy that you are thinking?
Yeah. So, the, the proposed, uh, title and then language, subsequent language. Um, I just want to make sure that I'm reading it correctly off the draft. So, um, it would change from transgender and gender nonconforming students to transgender and gender non-binary or just non-binary. Just, okay. So, transgender and non-binary students.
Okay. Um, let me see. Okay. So, I, I'll take feedback on, on that proposal, not motion, um, and see if we have consensus.
Do we have to remove our motion?
Yeah, because this is, um, discussion.
No, it's a discussion to build possible consensus. So, we don't know if we have it. So, if we do have it, then we'll remove the motion that Candace made. Well, Candace will remove the motion that Candace made. Uh, any, any comments on the proposed language, uh, which would change our title to transgender and non-binary students policy?
Yes. So, from what I understand, we would need to update the definition because you read a different definition that's in our policy. So, as long as we understand that if we're changing the title, we're changing the definitions, correct? Modifying the definitions.
And switching out.
What, the eighteen?
The words. Yeah.
Okay. So, just to be clear, the discussion is title change, definition change. So, definition go, goes from, um, definition goes from, uh, "gender nonconforming" to "non-binary", is that, is that correct?
No. There's a, there's a whole different definition.
Okay.
Well, "gender nonconforming" is still, um...
Mentioned in the policy. So, it would be part of the definitions.
Yes. But, the "non-binary" right now is like, super, like, a couple of words. Um, and then the one reflected in the Glisten's, like, update has a more, yeah.
Okay.
It's the one that Susan just read.
So, you were listing the things.
So, that's a lot of change. I, I would, I would say, the definition, not the title, but, because I don't have a copy of that in front of me, the definition.
We're, we're not going, unless, unless we decide we want to do the entire thing tonight, it would require switching out. We could leave it to the policy committee to, to, you, you can, your, your motion could direct the policy to change the title, update the definition, and switch out the terms throughout. And then, we'll send it up to Neola. But, we could still vote on it tonight if you wish, I believe. Yeah. Unless there are other issues that...
Okay. So, I'll just look to both sides and, and see if I have any objections to what Michael just stated. I'm not going to repeat that.
What, what he said.
What he said. Any, anything over here? Anything over here? All right. So...
No, support.
Okay. So, to continue discussion, and we don't have to vote on this one. Uh, to continue discussion then, Candace, do you want to withdraw your motion?
Yes, I withdraw that motion.
Okay. So, we are going to, uh, I'd like to please entertain a motion to approve the adoption of the transgender and non-binary students policy as submitted by the policy committee.
Is this leading to a, a continued discussion?
Yeah, that's correct.
Yeah.
Support.
Yeah. So, I mean, so moved.
Okay. So, Candace moves.
And I'll still support it.
Okay. Don't fight over it, guys. No, I'm just kidding. Uh, okay. And Brad?
I won't fight over it either.
So, we'll just, we'll just replace that, which makes it a little easier. Maybe, Susan, for the minutes. Hopefully. Okay. Okay. So, let's continue our discussion now on the transgender and non-binary students policy. Um, Jenny, did you have other comments or can I, should we move on to?
Go ahead. I might, I mean, I might chime in.
Oh, yeah. Okay. I didn't know if you had finished your thought on the title. Okay. Any, any other comments? Yeah, Dennis.
In reading through this, one of the issues that, that I was grappling with is the parental involvement here. You know, and, and I look at how best, as one of you said, how best do we support and I would also say protect our transgender youth? That, that's the goal here. You know, it's abhorrent to me to think that parents would commit violence against their children for coming out. It's abhorrent to me to think that they would kick them out of their house. It's abhorrent to me that they would send them to conversion therapy for this. And yet, I look around this room and I see there's a lot of great parents here. And yet, I look around this room, and I see there's a lot of great parents here that would be very loving and supportive of their children if they came out. So, I grapple with that. How do I encourage parental support and love for our children, who are transgender, without prohibiting that? If I have to err, I'm going to err on the side of protecting our children from violence at home, from a hostile environment, where they are kicked out of the home, and all this. So, while I want to involve the parents, because I look at you, and I said, these are the parents I want to be involved with children, to help them through this period. So, it's a balance, and if I have to err on one side... I was grappling with this for days and all night here, listening to you. And if I have to err on one side or the other, I have to err on protecting the children. So, I'm supportive of it.
Thank you. Thank you, Dennis. To build on that additionally, that was definitely, if I had to pick a number-one topic that we heard feedback on, it was parental involvement. And I did also read MDE documentation, State Board of Education documentation. I liked the statement with regards to the case-by-case basis with children coming out, and it being in an age-appropriate manner. I heard that feedback, so I don't want folks to think that we aren't hearing that feedback. We discussed that. It was something that was weighing on me also, also Dennis. And I would just like to kind of hear from others at the board table, because it is something that I'm grappling with, that State Board of Education language, and the case-by-case basis. So, I would just look to my peers to kind of make any additional statements. I mean, obviously, I heard our parents who know about this firsthand, so I would just like to see if anyone else would like to comment on that, because I think it's important that we hear all feedback. And I know you guys have been talking about this a lot more than the Finance Committee has, for example. So, Susan, do you want to take that one?
Yeah, actually, if Michael and/or, sorry, Vice President McVeigh and Candace... Trustee Jones would like to chime in on this. You know, this was a question back in June, when we... So, if you all want to talk about that a little, the history of, like, considering it.
Yeah, this was something that was powerful for me, hearing and talking to families of transgender students, and hearing how adamant they were that something like this, a case-by-case analysis of deciding, adults deciding when it's okay to disclose and when it's not, can be very harmful for children. Hearing about the number of cases of students running away, or ending up homeless, or taking their own lives because they were not able to go home to a home that would be welcoming to them if they came out, that really had an impact on me, for sure, and my decision, and not wanting to include any language like that, while also maintaining language that really provides a safe space for students to disclose. So, it's not leaving parents out completely, you know? But it's really prioritizing that safe space for students, making sure that there are counselors involved, that there are, you know, the support system is there, so that they can disclose in a manner that works for them and that will be... will provide them with a safe space at school, as well as at home. So, I felt like the language that we landed on really provided that. So, it says, "This would include providing the student with the support services necessary to make the disclosure in a safe and supportive environment." So, it's not leaving, you know, leaving out parents completely, or... But it's saying to the student, "Are you safe? Is it okay that we disclose, or we need to speak with your parents because of X, Y, Z, legal reason? You know, how can we help you do that in a way that would be safe for you?" So, that's where I landed on it.
Right, part of the nature of our role as trustees is not to micromanage the staff, but to support them wherever we can, to support superintendent, who also directs the staff. And I agree with Trustee Jones, that the language where we landed on made me realize that this is a matter of trust and faith in the administrators of the school and the parents. So, I listened to, I read the letters from, I believe, every single administrator in this district, who were very supportive, and offered their suggestions, but were extraordinarily supportive, and had no issues with the draft, with the language that we landed on. And listening to the parents tonight, it was validated and reinforced that we're on the right track. And so, I have, beyond their amazing statements, I've got nothing to add, nothing to, except to thank you for validating every, all the work that we've done to this point. So, I have no personal opinion at this point, except to say that I think we've landed on the right language, to use Trustee Jones's words, and I'm ready to move forward, without inserting anything else.
Susan, then Brad, yeah. So, thank you all for sharing that. Additionally, this MDE, the language that was being considered, was for LGBTQ guidance in 2016. Ann Arbor, in 2017, adopted a policy based off of the model policy that we're looking at today, or we're considering. And they did not include this language. Plymouth Canton, December 2020, passed a policy based off of Glisten. And they do not have that language. So, that was also kind of a glaring thing as well. And, you know, talking about the language, always changing, and we've had so many, so much progress in laws that, you know, I think there's more research done, and I think the way the policy is, is good.
So, what I'll say about this is, I read every word of things that are sent to us. And sometimes I don't like them, and sometimes I do, but I read every word, okay? So, I want that to be said out loud. I wrestled with this. I wrestled with this a lot. And because I do affirm parental involvement, I want to be involved in my own kids' lives, and I hope that my child would feel that my child could tell me who they were. And so, I value that. But I also will say that I greatly value the work of committee. I know that this committee was thorough. I know that this committee looked at Ann Arbor, looked at Plymouth Canton, you know? They looked into guidance from Glisten, and recommendations from, you know, pediatricians, and from, you know... And, you know, I don't want any of these outcomes for kids. And so, for me, like, they looked into relevant case law. Like, so, like, I can honestly tell you, like, the reason I didn't ask a lot of questions is because I actually just really knew that this was so well-done last time. And so, for me, that language, while I affirm parental involvement, and I affirm that I want that, and I affirm MDE recommending it, if our policy team says that this is the best language, and it's been fully vetted, and it's been talked to with our community and policy, and they've had a chance to offer us feedback, then for me, I respect the team, and I respect the fact that I shouldn't meddle in that, and that I... And I also will say this, you know, that language about, you know, a safe environment. I mean, I, our administrators, our staff, our counselors, our teachers, our, you know, support team, they are a safe environment. I believe in them. And so, because I believe in them, because I believe in the committee, I believe in us, I would argue that we should leave the policy the way it is.
Could I just react to one thing? Trustee Gerby, any comments you make, well-thought and well-considered as they are, would never be considered meddling, just so you know. I mean, yeah, it's not cut yourself down. There's plenty of other people who want to do that, you know? You don't have to do it yourself.
So, this was also a piece that I have thought a lot about. I have talked to a lot of people about it. I have read everything that came to us, as everybody said. And what it boiled down to me were a couple of things. So, first, as I stated earlier, the number-one job of educators is to keep kids safe. And there are times when we don't disclose things to parents because of child safety. We are, that's already a practice. If we fear, or if a child discloses to us that they're in danger, we already have an obligation to act in a way that would keep kids safe, until it's discovered otherwise. I also thought about, and talked to pediatricians, too, because I wanted to know, like, what is their stance on this? What does the American Academy of Pediatrics say is best for our kids? And because they have policies in place for other privacy, they don't have anything that's just concerning transgender or non-binary students. But what was shared with me, and what I know as a parent, is that my pediatricians asked me to leave the room so they can have conversations with my kids, because they want to keep them safe. Even though I'm there, and I'm supportive, and we know each other, even outside of the office, they ask me to leave, and I trust them, and I think most of you trust them, too, when that happens. I also, this year, sent my oldest to college. And one of the things that the Residence Life Director, and by the way, I was not very happy about this, but I'll just say it, because I think it speaks to the crowd, but she said, you know, "Your child is 18 now, and she's coming to college. So, if you don't have a good enough relationship to have a conversation with her about the tough stuff, you better start now, because she doesn't have to tell you anything. She doesn't have to tell you if she's been to the hospital. She doesn't have to tell you about her grades. She doesn't have to tell you about any of those things." So, in thinking about those things, and then also looking back at the policy and seeing that it says, "In general..." So, there is some discretion for adults to make good decisions on the behalf of our students. But in thinking of all of those things, bottom line is that these are practices that are widely accepted, and they are widely accepted because of safety for our kids. So, when I saw this language, and when I was grappling with it, even up until this afternoon, seeking out the last morsel of information, this is where I landed, that this is good policy, the way it's written.
Sure, I'll add on that I want to make sure everybody knows, and I'm very supportive of this policy, and I would like to see it passed tonight, assuming that the board also feels that way. I've been attending transgender task force meetings for well over a year to show my support and work through a number of the issues associated with providing better supports for transgender youth. I will say that I did interpret this potential addition differently. And I interpret it from the standpoint of it talks about potentially involving students and administration with parents on a case-by-case basis. How I interpreted that is, I have such great confidence in our administration, and watching the things that they've done over the years in a variety of different situations. Number one, forming DEI equity teams, making sure that they're always out to support the student's best interests. I saw it as an avenue to potentially involve parents, if they felt it was warranted, to help talk kids with them through the discussion, because I've seen it happen time and time again. So, I was looking at it a little differently. I recognize that that's not necessarily the way that the board is interpreting that language. I just wanted to point out that I was seeing that differently. And I don't want to be holding up passing of this policy, because I think it's great language. And, but I saw the potential addition of that language differently. I just wanted to point that out.
Thanks, Steve. I think as the leader of the school district, it's always good to get input on things you have to operationalize. Before, I had one other thing I wanted to discuss. I just wanted to make sure there weren't any other comments on that piece. Okay, the second thing I think that we've been getting, and a lot of this is because, you know, we're reading, like Jenny said, she's having conversations, she's having feedback, and this happens with all of us. And I just want to make sure we're also sharing this information at the table, because when folks email us, and we email a response, that's seen by one person, or maybe two people in that family, two adults. So, I think this is another good topic to just touch on at the table, and that's the restrooms and lockers, because we get a lot of questions about that. And I know that you just had a reply to this today, and Dennis, you cited some case law on this. I understand that law, so I'm not challenging that law. But I was wondering if somebody could just take on a response when someone comes to us with asking questions about locker rooms and restrooms, because I think that's an important thing to discuss in an open meeting. Who would like to take it? Susan, yes.
Title IX, done.
Well, and I... I'm sorry. Susan, I totally appreciate that response. But could you just say a little bit more for those that are familiar, just kind of for the record?
I don't know if others would want to chime in, that we're tag teaming here. So, yes, there's laws that, actually, I think it was mentioned... Some of our parents talked about some of the case law with, you know, supporting this, backing this up. You know, in June, the Department of Education and Office of Civil Rights recognized that there are Title IX protections based on sexual orientation and gender identity. This is something that the district has already worked through, and has been supportive of our students. And so, you know, this isn't anything new, and it's, you know, something that legally we have, and morally, a responsibility to do.
I'll speak to this from a personal experience, and I'll... A year ago, I might have been somebody who sent you that email. And I might have been somebody who was questioning that. And I will tell you, luckily, in the last year, I've made some friends in my life, some of whom are sitting in a room, and who have helped me understand that transgender kids just want to be who they are. And they want to use the bathroom that they identify with. And that doesn't make them a threat, okay? They just want to be who they are as a human being. And I can tell you that I struggled with that personally. I was like, "Oh, my gosh, but safety, safety, safety." And I luckily have found myself in recent times realizing that my kid's going to be safe. That kid just wants to use the bathroom. And so, the reality for me is, I have to own that, and I have to say that that could have been me recently. And the fact of the matter is, I hope that this policy will help us to talk about those things, and to have change happen in our lives, so that we can be honest with one another, and we can learn. And so, for me, like, that's how I would answer that parent, and that's how I would answer those emails, and I've read them, and I've seen them. And I understand how they felt, because I was there. And I just hope we keep working at it.
So, one thing that I'll say is, it's a really good thing that I have unlimited data on my phone, because I've had lots and lots of phone conversations about this particular topic as well. So, here is my kind of response and where I've landed with this. So, the first thing is that we're not asking for an open bathroom, open locker room situation here. We're asking kids to be able to use the facilities that match their identity, that match their gender. And so, so, so that is very different. I know that some people are saying like, maybe this is like a cultural shift. I just want to make it very clear that we're not saying like, you know, everybody, it's not like the, the baths in, in other countries where people are just free. You know, we're not asking for that at the high school. So that's one thing I'll be clear on, because that is a concern that came up. The other thing that I'll say is that in talking with an administrator in our district, who's very smart, because he hired me. Just kidding, just had to get that in there, a little brevity. But in, in, in hearing a response that he had to, to this question, he's been in the district for 22 years and it's never been an issue where, where, where someone has, you know, where they've had to check for someone's gender before they're using the bathroom or where they've had any, like it's, it's, it's really not a daily issue. But I do know that it is a daily issue for some of our kids. I have a 15-year-old daughter. And, and I know that when we're changing in locker rooms, I'm, I'm a 44-year-old woman. It's a vulnerable thing to change your clothes in front of other people. And so I know for me, as a 44-year-old woman, I might choose a private space to change, you know? My daughter, my 15-year-old daughter, she might choose a private space to change. And so what this boils down to for me, and this is, this is also job-related, because I'm an instructional coach and when I, when we talk with teachers, sometimes there are all these things that are barriers and burdens to, to what we're trying to do. And so we often talk about the sphere of control, the sphere of influence and the, the sphere of non-control, like the things that we don't have control over. I have control over where I change my clothes. My daughter has control over where she changes her clothes. My son too, don't want to leave him out either. They have control over which bathrooms they use. They can choose those things because that's in their sphere of control. What is not in their sphere of control, according to the law, is where other people can change their clothes and go to the bathroom. And so we are in the district providing space so that when people do feel vulnerable or feel like they need that space, they can choose that. And we're providing more of those spaces. Steve talked about this with operations. We're creating more bathrooms. We are creating more spaces for kids to feel comfortable, regardless of the reasons for finding that space. And so for me, it comes down to that sphere of control and that sphere of influence. So the, the, where that influence comes in is that I can communicate with my teachers about what I need to feel safe. My, or, you know, I'm speaking as a student, I guess. My children or your children or any child can speak to their teachers about what they need to feel safe, their parents about what they need to feel safe. That's their sphere of influence. But they cannot cross that line to make those choices for other people. So that's the sphere that's not, that's, that's out of their control. So I, I do want to continue to encourage the district to provide spaces for people like me who'd prefer a private space to change. And for our kids who would prefer that too. Because it's, it's not even about transgender. It's just about how vulnerable it is to be, you know, to change and to, and to, and to be in that situation. So that's where I fall in the gender, in the, in the bathroom issue. I don't want to for one minute say that it is not an issue that people shouldn't, you know, have worries about. We all have our worries. We're allowed to have our feelings and our, and our concerns. And I think having open dialogue, one, one family in particular that I talked to, talked to many people at the school and, and had a better understanding afterwards. And so I think, you know, we might not always land in the space that we feel like is 100% what we want to have happen. But I think we can land in an area where we acknowledge that people feel safe and we're providing that, that, that ability for people to influence others in what they need to feel safe. So that is where I am falling on the bathroom issue, not to, not to say that it's, it shouldn't be an issue for people. I understand privacy. But to say that we are doing what we can and what we have in our control.
Okay, thanks Jenny. Yeah, Candace.
Yeah, I just want to read something from the policy again. That speaks to that privacy piece. So just in case that, that was a worry for anyone or thinking about, you know, will there be private spaces for any student that, that would want to have those? And it says, "The, the district shall incorporate a single use, single user facilities and greater privacy into new construction or renovation and to access ways to increase privacy for all students in existing facilities." So I just want to, wanted to mention that.
Okay, great. Thanks Candace. I, I wanted to say one thing and then I'm going to move this to vote unless anyone has any, any other burning topic, which I think we don't. I had the opportunity to talk with a chief diversity and equity, equity and inclusion officer this morning as part of my job and, and somebody I really respect. And she said something to me that really stuck with me. We were talking about creating a culture of inclusion. And she said, "Equity is about creating conditions that allow people to walk into their best futures." And I thought that that was really, a, a really good thing in conversation to have today. So that was, that was a little fortuitous. So I am going to move this to vote. So because we had a lot of conversation, I'm going to reread the motion. The motion was made by Candace, seconded by Brad. It's a motion to approve the adoption of the transgender and non-binary students' policy as submitted by the policy committee. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Hearing none, motion carries seven zero. I'm going to give, thank you. Let's, let's take just a minute. I, I know that's probably an emotional thing, so I want to be respectful of, of having you take that moment. Moving on, I'd like to please entertain a motion to approve the adoption of policy 0174.4 treasurer as submitted by the policy committee.
So moved.
Jenny, second?
Support.
Michael, support. Discussion, someone from the policy committee. Michael, do you want to take this one?
First of all, it's 171.4, although it's written as that. And Ms. Janky, Yankee, Yonky discovered that the other day. Thank you so much for catching that. We'll call that a scrivener's error or we just, scrivener's mess up. There's seemed to have been no discussion, so in, in no notes from anybody. And I'm not even going to spend the 45 and a half seconds it would take me to read the, the definition of what the treasurer does. But I'm open to answer any questions that we may have. The only question I'm, I might have and I, is, well, I have no question.
Did you just answer your own question?
No, I, I didn't. It, it, the question comes up in the next part.
Okay, okay, so perfect. And I can, I can probably anticipate what you're going to ask, so I'm ready. I, I, I just have a comment. I've wanted this for almost two years, so that's all I'd say. Any other, any other comments? Susan?
So, if we move forward with this and the, the next policy, I want to, I guess probably after we have a treasurer or vote on a treasurer, and I want to put this to the finance committee with board operating procedures. I feel like we need that as well. In addition, you know, we have the board operating procedures and one for the policies and bylaws. And so I would like for somebody to draft that up, possibly the treasurer and finance.
So Susan, are you, are, just to be, just to clarify, I, I'm not really, yeah, are you asking that a board operating procedure be created on the functions of, of the treasurer position?
No, finance committee, which would be related possibly to the treasurer serving under that.
I'm not sure where, if you, because it says the treasurer would serve as a member of the finance committee or may serve as chair of the finance committee. Was there something I'm missing? Okay.
Yeah, it's separate. It's, it's something to consider when, when this happens. We need a board operating procedure on finance committee like we do with the policy committee. And so it was just, yeah.
Let's, let's hit that one when it comes up.
I know, but I'm, I'm putting, putting it, a related comment to that.
Okay, any other comments on policy 171.4? No? Okay, motion made by Jenny, seconded by Michael. All those in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, hearing none, motion carries seven zero. I'd like to please entertain a motion to approve the revision to policy number 0152 to include the officer position of treasurer as submitted by the policy committee.
So we'll, some of,
Oh, do it, do it, do it. I already had.
So Brad, was it you? Michael, second? Michael, any, any conversation on that one?
No, just to note that we've just added three words and a treasurer to the list of officers that we would select. This also, and, and reminded me, Trust Secretary Esepp, is that we, we will need to pop this into the board operating procedure now that we actually have a policy that we can put into the board operating procedure, so.
Okay, excellent. Any other conversation on that one? All right, seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, hearing none, motion carries seven zero. Moving on to administration updates. Dr. Letch.
I'd like to highlight a couple extraordinary students in Jason Chen and Andriana Ulri. The Board of Directors of the Global Health Leaders Conference at Johns Hopkins University sent a letter to our administration congratulating Jason and Andriana for presenting in their 2021 Global Health Leaders Conference at Johns Hopkins University, which was held virtually this past summer and concluded last month. It's a premier global health education program led by Johns Hopkins University students and faculty. And at this conference, emerging global health leaders in grades nine through 12 from around the world learn from one another and some of the world leaders in global health, public health and medicine. Jason discussed the rising healthcare costs worldwide and how big data analytics can be utilized, not only to address the global crisis, but improve the overall quality of health. Andriana discussed the current state of mental health across the globe and the impacts of the stigma on those with mental illness. She examined the most common mental illnesses globally, explored the surrounding stigma and encouraged viewers to take steps in their own life to start rewriting the narrative around mental illness. Jason and Andriana were some of the few students from Michigan admitted into our highly selective conference program this year. And we sincerely thank Celine High School and your community for nurturing future leaders in global health and medicine. Jason and Andriana wonderfully represented Celine High School and the state of Michigan in our program. And we're really proud of them and their great efforts that they put forth. I also want to thank the Rotary Club of Celine that this past weekend dedicated a band pavilion at Henni Field. Some of you know that Celine Area Schools manages the Henni Field property and they dedicated the band pavilion to the Friends of Henni Field. And we continue to keep that property and facility operating and really think it's a, a gem for the community to be able to access. I do want to finally touch on our staffing shortage. We've talked a lot about this. There's a lot of thank yous that need to go out with how well everybody is dealing with a very, very dire situation. Transportation and Buildings and Grounds Department. We have a shortage of bus drivers and the Buildings and Grounds crew as well. That's meant that directors and coordinators are stepping in to fill the void, including driving buses. We have parents who are forming walking trains to better help students get to school with our expanded walking zone and a shortage of crossing guards. We have our certified, meaning our teachers and support staff who are often our primary substitute teachers, that they're doing that on their planning periods because of the significant shortage of substitute teachers throughout the county. Our paraeducators, special education teachers and parents who continue to support this shortage in paraeducators in so many different ways. And finally, our students for simply being happy to be back in school and your willingness to work with us best to try to meet all of their individual needs. So a lot of thank yous go out to the community and our staff and our students. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Any trustee updates? And Julian, do you want to start?
Yeah. So I was able to this, this week and the week before stop by the Fun Run at Harvest as well as Pleasant Ridge. I took some pictures here and it was a lot of fun. Just watching, it made me a little bit jealous. I remember we got these, when I was at Harvest, we got these really cool cheetah wristbands that counted our steps. And then I kind of forgot about Fun Runs until Ms. Dawson told me to stop by them. So as you can see, they have super awesome bounce houses. Who doesn't love a bounce house? I'm 17 and I still want to use one. And hopefully when I'm 40, 50 and 60, I still want to use one. And as you can see, everyone's having a whole lot of fun getting outside. Again, obviously we are all getting very tired of COVID, so it was nice to see just, you know, everyone playing together outside, having a good time, running through bounce houses, jumping rope, getting in lines. And then I have a couple more pictures too. I have a nice selfie in front of a slide that I wanted to go down. I didn't get to go down it, but I got to watch plenty of kids go down it and it looked like a lot of fun. And then on another one, more bouncy house pictures, just so if anybody would like to put one at the high school. These ones are sufficient. There are about 12 kids climbing up it at once. I'm not sure if that would be possible with seven, 16, 17, 18-year-olds, but I think it would work. But the Fun Runs were super fun to watch. You know, as you can see, teachers are participating and all the kids are having a lot of fun. Some running dead sprint 30 laps around the parking lot. So that, yeah, it was, it was really good to see. And there were a whole lot of parents, grandparents, family members there to support too. So it's a great community event to watch.
So I, did I see your mom here earlier? Yeah, so for, for his graduation party, I think he went to a bounce house.
I feel obligated though, Julian, to say the following. About a decade or so ago, at one of my daughter's birthdays, when the kids were tired out from jumping up and down, about five or six of the moms got in to the jumping castle. Well, I have to tell you, if you've ever, if you've ever seen what happens when four moms all of a sudden get to one side, well, those little stakes come out. And that thing rolled down the hill. So I feel obligated to share that all you 40-plus or whatever year olds out there, do be careful out there. I do have some things to say as the Washington Association of School Boards Executive met to discuss dates. We've got some interesting things coming up for the school board and I'm going to be putting out a calendar of those. Save the dates tomorrow. I was at the homecoming parade. I saw Dr. Letch. I know you were out there somewhere. And wow, it was great to see everybody. And also, I was also at the Henni Field dedication with Anna Britnell. And I did not know that we own that little chunk of pasture. It was beautiful. It's coming along nicely. And it's, it's a great pavilion. It's really nice to see it in there. So thanks to Rotary and thanks to, to all the work that went into that. Oh, and there's more, of course, because our kids in woodworking, I think, are probably going to be working on building tables and benches and whatever other accoutrement could go into that thing. So, yeah, looking forward to it.
I just want to say really quickly, because it has been, it was, it was since the last meeting that we did have homecoming and it was really nice to see the kids participating. I know that there was some concern over the rain on Saturday night. I just have to say that my husband and I drove the cars for, for two van loads full of kids. And they got in the car and they were wet. As soon as it started raining, we started heading towards the field. They got sprinkled on. I am not kidding you, there were hundreds of kids running through puddles like toddlers. They didn't care that it was raining. They just wanted to be at something together. They got in the car soaking wet and went home and changed and no one ever broke their smile. Like they were so happy. So thank you to student council, to Mr. Raft, to Mrs. Dawson and everyone who made that week possible, Friday night possible. Go football team, go Hornets. So that's exciting news too, that the football team's doing so well. And thank you for everyone who participated in helping to make Saturday night a reality for our kids after, after, you know, a lot of missed events last year. So appreciate that. Thanks.
Well, mentioning Henni Field and the football team, a little bit of,
Well, mentioning Henni Field and the football team, a little bit of Celine trivia here. Henni Field was the first site of the Celine High School football field. The story is, when the high school decided to play football, there was no field. The local merchants donated the seed, topsoil, and things like that, and the farmers in the community came in and planted that. And no, I did not play there.
All right, anyone else? All right, sounds good. Moving on to consent agenda. The following, the following are offered as part of the consent agenda. The motion noted, "Will allow for the authorization of all listed items without discussion unless a member of the board requests that any or all be considered individually." I'd like to please entertain a motion to authorize the following items as part of the consent agenda. Item A, approval of the Board of Education regular meeting minutes of September twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-one. B, approval of the Board Finance Committee meetings, committee, committee meeting minutes of September twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-one. C, approval of payment of the general fund accounts payable of October twelfth, twenty twenty-one, in the amount of one million, seven hundred and forty-eight thousand, sixty-three dollars and seventy cents. D, approval of payment of the bond series three accounts payable of October twelfth, twenty twenty-one, in the amount of eighty-five thousand, nine hundred and thirty-two dollars and thirty-seven cents. And E, receive and file curriculum, finance, and human resources reports. May I entertain that motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
All right.
Support.
Thank you, Jenny. Second, Michael. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Hearing none, motion carries seven zero. Items scheduled on the next agenda.
Right, we're going to do the Continue to Learn Plan and Sex Education Advisory Board Proposed Life Skills Curriculum Adoption.
And I'm going to add treasurer to that. So we will go through, I will brush up on, on my policy for elections, and we'll see you on the twenty-sixth. This is our second opportunity for public comment. A member of the public may address the board briefly for up to three minutes or request to be scheduled on the agenda of a future meeting. Thank you so much. I'm going to start with the two that I had for first comment that we didn't have enough time for. So our first, our first uncle is Donald Calucci. You don't look like an uncle, but I don't know. Go ahead, Tiffany.
There we go. He asked me to read his comment, but since he didn't get to speak in first public comment, I think if there's anything he would say right now, I feel safe saying that he would just say, "Thank you."
Okay, thank you for that feedback. Our next person is Lisa Slosson, former Board of Education trustee.
So I was going to read her comments, but I think I'm gonna, she sent them all to you all, so you've read it. So I imagine she would also say, "Thank you," so I'm gonna let you all off on that one.
Okay, thank you. This is a very efficient second public comment, isn't it? Our, our next resident is Keith. Is it Cobler Cable? Cable, whatever, whatever. I'm going to say Keith. Reverend Keith, come on up.
Yeah, it sounds like many of you went through a large process to get to this point in time tonight. And you've always been inside my head ever since we first met, okay? And so you were tonight. I was going to get up here and say, yesterday was National Coming Out Day and Indigenous Peoples' Day. It will not, no longer be known as that other day that some people still advertise for sales, for sale purposes. But I just want to say that as one who's part of a denomination who ordained their first openly gay man in nineteen seventy-two, Reverend Bill Johnson, I'm glad, because for a long time, we were loners. And there are so many more allies and people who have been able to come out. So whatever has brought you to this time and to this place, I give thanks. And I just want to say, you know, from other things that have come up, I figured that after I left Missouri in the early nineteen eighties, that I didn't have to worry about the Klan anymore. And that's not, not true. Don't take your foot off the pedal. Keep going and keep revisiting this. Because I think with every generation, we have to instill in the next generation the same learnings that we've come to. So. Thank you.
Okay, Keith, thank you for your comments. I was, I just received, I just want to mention, I received a piece of feedback after the last meeting, so I reviewed policy. I just reordered these slightly, so if folks did have an opportunity to speak in first public comment, I'm putting them towards the end, so we're taking first-time commenters first. I just wanted to, to let you know why I shuffled these papers just a little bit. Our next teacher and guardian is Bridget Sparks.
Yes, last time I said parent, and my sister might take issue with that. I was ready to get up here and read a bunch more names, because as more teachers saw the letter, I'm still not sure that all teachers have, the names grew more than twice what it was before. But I get to come up here instead, say, "Thank you," because roughly ten years ago, I moved my family out of this district because of a board decision. And to know that, you know, now, it's very, I'm sitting with very different emotions and just incredibly thankful that you're protecting our families and protecting our children. And thank you.
Thank you, Bridget. Our next parent is Christina Laronas. Did I pronounce that correctly? Okay, thank you.
Christina Laronas, is this on? Yes, okay, thank you. And I basically just want to, to thank all of you for this, and I want to thank my friend Darcy for keeping me apprised of this. I was, I was not even, I've been focused on the sex education policy that you'll be discussing at the next meeting, and I've written to all of you about that, which I strongly support and hope you'll adopt. But Darcy's been keeping me on top of this as well, and I, I, I'm just so grateful that I was here this evening for what I consider to be a truly momentous occasion. And, and, and not to make it seem like more than it is, but I remember very well where I was when "Don't Ask, Don't Tell" was repealed. And a friend of mine, who happens to be gay, had just pulled up into my driveway, and I ran out of the house and hugged her, and we both just cried. And I felt that way tonight. I, I was surprised at how emotional I felt. And I wanted to thank all of the parents and everyone who's put so much into this, and their hearts and their souls, and, and this means a lot to a lot of people that I know and a lot of younger people that I know. And this is just tremendously meaningful this evening, and I'm so proud of you for doing this. And I'm so grateful to you for, for adopting this policy. This is just, I can't tell you how important it is. And, and I'll, I'll just finish by saying that I'm a graduate of Celine High School and the University of Michigan. And when I attended Celine High School, it was a long time ago, right, Dennis? And boy, we've come a long, long way, and I'm extremely proud of how this community has grown. And it's not just for the benefit of the students, it's for the benefit of all of us. We've all, you know. When my daughter was born, that was really the first close contact that I ever had with a person with a disability. And people think that you have all of this expertise and knowledge all of a sudden because your child was, was born, and you do not. And you, it's a learning and growing experience, and I appreciate all of you learning and growing and from our students, learning and growing from what they teach us. And every day, we learn from our, our children, and we've come a long way in this community. We have a long way to go. Thank you very much.
Christina, thank you for your comments. Our next community member, local church community member, is Kirk DeMars.
How you guys doing tonight? Good, okay. Obviously, I'm a, you, you labeled this second talk as you were prioritizing first-time speakers. I'm not an expert in attending board meetings, first of all. I don't live in this community. However, obviously, as, as I was described, I'm a local church member here in town. I would describe myself as, if you've ever lived in an association, I'm your neighbor that lives a couple doors down but has rarely interacted with you, but yet I know you're the president of the, of the association. You know, in my life, I've, I've went about my business just being busy, never interacting with school boards, and that's shameful. I've got two kids that are now graduated and two in high school, obviously another district, and I've just now started getting involved there. So, you know, I started out a couple times ago when I attended my first meeting with them as apologizing to my board there, as well as my community members that were there. And I said, "I apologize to you guys," and this might sound as a backhanded comment, "but I apologize to you guys for not attending and not holding you accountable." Because that's our responsibility as community members. You guys serve us, and a lot of boards have forgotten that. So that's a responsibility as me as a parent, and I should be involved in the people that are making decisions for my children, that greatly impact my children. And I apologize to my community members, because I wouldn't stand side by side with them, attending those things, and that's irresponsible. So I'm really here tonight. I was on my way to getting here, but wasn't probably properly motivated or wasn't making it happen soon enough. And how many of you guys love Facebook? Not a big fan of it, but I'm on it. A local individual challenged pastors, local pastors. Where are you pastors? I'm not going to get into where my stance is on, you know, the decision tonight or the one that's coming up that's very, you know, controversial, right? But they were challenging pastors. Where are pastors in the community speaking out on things? I am a youth pastor. That's what brings me here tonight. I have students, one of which was on the list that was mentioned tonight, that was in support of your policy. So, you know, I engage this issue, you know, I'm not somebody, thank you, I'm not somebody that's, you know, unaware of it. So, you know, I just wanted my community to know that I'm going to start being here, I'm going to start being involved, I'm going to be informed, I'm going to be somebody that they can come to, somebody that I can talk to them, and I can talk to you, and I can be educated on what's actually happening, as opposed to seeing it on social media. So I thank you guys for having me. I appreciate the, the time, and thank you for, for being here and doing what you guys do.
Kirk, thank you for your comments. Next parent is Carrie Grove.
Hello? So, thank you for having me. I stand before you today, and I want to address the school board and recognize that I feel in your bid to be inclusive, you're being insensitive to a number of the community members. You've made it such that people that have differing opinions are not welcome to attend. I think that they're not encouraged to speak out. I think you're not listening. So that being said, this is a very controversial policy you just adopted. I feel you did not give us adequate notice to properly research this reply. I understand there was about two days' notice before you published this policy to be considered. So in two days, I wasn't able to come to the last board meeting, but I'm here today. I want you to know you accepted this without hearing my opinion. You've acknowledged lots of people here have opinions. That's fine. But I think what you've done is you've put other children at risk. So while you're supporting a small portion of kids who are valuable, they are valuable. There is one in three girls that have been sexually assaulted between the ages of eleven and seventeen. They've been assaulted by committed rape or attempted rape. One in three, one in four boys have faced that same sexual assault. I don't see where your policies are protecting them or supporting them. You mentioned Title IX. I feel like Title IX was designed to support female athletes who didn't have another outlet to compete. And we've seen where women have lost scholarship opportunities to bodies that are physiologically faster, stronger, more lung capacity, more heart function, more muscle mass ratio. And by adopting this policy, you're putting these girls at lower opportunities, and I don't think that's what you intended. So while you've put a lot of effort into these decisions, and some of them are appropriate, I appreciate private spaces in the bathroom, I think you're missing points here.
Carrie, thank you for your comments. Our next, our next community member is former student Megan Grove.
I'm going to speak on behalf of my daughter, Megan, who I only received this a few hours ago. She says, "Thank you for listening to my mother on reading this on my behalf. I simply cannot stand to remain silent while knowing about the policies Celine is trying to implement. Let me start by saying that I appreciate Celine's efforts to make everyone feel supported. I've been saying for years that Celine has been a very toxic environment, where only the popular rich kids get any support, and they aren't, when things aren't going well. However, I strongly oppose these policies and can't imagine how on earth you people think this is going to be the solution. I attended Celine every year from kindergarten through senior year. I was bullied almost all of it, and not once did I receive support. In fact, I was usually made to be the perpetrator and was punished for the very behavior I was reporting. By the time I reached middle school, I stopped asking for help. By high school, I no longer felt that the schools were a safe place for me. Celine stood by and supported my attacks and my abusers every single time. I opted not to report any of the sexual harassment I received from both genders, by the way, because I knew I would be punished. However, all of that took place before Celine decided to go woke. You failed miserably back then, and as recently as three years ago, you did not protect me. So how do these policies change that? If you couldn't support me then, how on earth can anyone expect your support now, when these acts happen? Because it's going to happen. Don't kid yourselves. I'm currently attending university to study criminal justice and forensic psychology. I'm choosing a career in law enforcement, so I can offer others the help and protection I never received from Celine. Part of my coursework has been extensively, or to extensively study heinous acts and sexual abuse topics, sexual abuse tops my list, especially when there are minors involved. Have you ever heard of Larry Nassar? You've created a perfect environment for the abuse to happen, just like MSU, and no one will be able to speak out against it without suffering repercussions. By the way, your policy to not report to parents if students come out as transgender is ridiculous. According to American Psychology Association, minors generally cannot consent to treatments. A parent or guardian consents on the minor's behalf. A person, a parent who consents on the minor's behalf generally has the right to know the content of a child's treatment. A psychologist who are providing medical treatment cannot maintain confidentiality. Why are our teachers given that power? School staff are not trained as such and should not be required to maintain confidentiality, especially especially when they're reporting to parents during parent teacher confidence conferences. Instead of mandating confidentiality, help the student to create a plan to keep them safe. If you're going to play that safety card and claim the students are afraid of parental abuse, that circles back to keeping your students safe. And I know Saline can't do that. So please, offer your students support, but do not offer these policies. If you can't offer support to everyone, then you don't offer it to anyone and certainly not the minority. Thank you.
Thank you for your second comments. Next we have parent Jen Asness. Jen, whenever you're ready.
Hi. I just wanted to bring up a different topic, but somewhat to do with what we've been talking about tonight. I'm not sure if everyone's aware, but tomorrow, the students in the life skills room in the high school aren't, are not able to, or at least most of them, aren't able to attend school tomorrow. I was notified about that two weeks ago and I guess some people were notified in advance that you could opt in because of the SAT and PSAT testing. So I asked if I could opt my student, my, I have two children in the life skills room in high school. So I asked if I could opt them in and I was told I could not. Administration told me that my children weren't cognitively capable of taking the SAT or PSAT, so they had to stay home. And that all the special ed staff would be pulled out to administer the tests to students that could take it. So I just wanted to bring it up because we try to be flexible and accommodating, but we've heard a lot about diversity, equity and inclusion. And when I heard this two weeks ago, I was just, it just really struck me that my kids are being excluded from school tomorrow and we're given no option. And I know there, there's been a lot of training for inclusion and I just, I just wanted to bring this up because I want to make sure that you all are treating every diversity, equity and inclusion scenario with the same respect and care and doing the right thing. Because I don't think that foreseeing these students to stay home from a day of school, that I don't think they're going to get allowed to make up and make them do asynchronous learning, which my kids are not able to do asynchronous learning. So basically tomorrow was just a day off of school. So I just wanted to make sure that you're treating them all with the same respect. Thanks.
Jen, thank you for your comments. I'm going to refer your, your feedback to Dr. Lodge, who I saw taking notes for individual follow-up. Next we have parent Shannon Beeman.
Thank you, thank you board, thank you committee, thank you involved parents. So overwhelmed with the passing of this tonight, of the safety and inclusion you're providing for students within Saline and making the environment that much more open. As an elected official, I know how much you have to weigh and the different voices that you hear within the community. And so I respect how some struggles were with, with the language and the investment into making sure that it was crafted in just the right way and following guidelines that were set previously. So just thank you and on behalf of my first grader at Pleasant Ridge, thank you so much.
Shannon, thank you for your comments. I just wanted to remind everyone in the, in the room that we need real names on the forms, first names and last names. So I'm going to be moving now to our opportunity for those who have spoke previously. First is Tiffany Alexander, parent. Oh, okay. Well, then I'm going to move to the next one. And that is David Hayward, parent.
I just want to say to every person sitting up here, thank you so very deeply. As a, excuse me, as a non-binary person myself, I never dreamed, growing up, that I would live to see a day that people like me could be acknowledged and supported in our schools. But as much as that's true and that's important to me, it's as the parent of a non-binary child that I'm up here most to give, to say thank you to every single one of you. Knowing that their experience in the rest of school is going to be so much better than mine ever had the opportunity to be makes me happier as a parent than, than just about anything else that I can imagine. I know that this was a difficult decision for many of you and there were a lot of new things to struggle with and I thank you very deeply and very completely and sincerely for, for having those hard discussions and for coming to the right conclusion. Thank you very much.
David, thank you for your feedback. Tiffany?
Hi, again. So first, the first thing I did was text my kid who's at home, supposed to be working, but eagerly awaiting your decision. So that was the first thing I did and then I ran out to call them, to which they are ecstatic. And my child said to say, "Thank you, thank you for believing me about my body and my mind and my life, rather than people who don't know anything about me. Thank you for believing me." So I'm very excited. I haven't lived in Saline super long, I think it's been about eight years. My kid didn't start out in Saline. They went to a very tiny private school called Decrop in Ann Arbor. And we didn't switch them until they basically aged out, even though we lived here, they were adjusted well, it was fine. I was very nervous about coming to Saline. The lack of diversity was kind of scary and then going from a classroom with 15 kids and two teachers to Saline Middle School was scary. But I met with staff, I met with the principal, my kid had a tour and we felt pretty good, so we said, "Okay, we'll try it." And for my kid, it went really, really well. They were very happy. There was an adjustment period, but there was a lot of support. It was a good experience. Now they're in the high school and they're also having a really good experience. All their teachers use their pronouns. All the teachers have been incredibly supportive. Their principal has helped them learn how to use their voice in a way that as parents, because we're at home, I can't. So now today, the school has taken a tremendous step in letting my kid know that as their board members, as their superintendent leader of their school, that you care about them, that they don't have to beg you to listen or plead, that you're going to protect them, you're going to keep them safe and you're going to hear them and listen to them and do the hard work. And I know this was hard and it's not really fair to have to take, I know what was a lot of abuse and ugliness in emails for the decisions that you've had to make. And I know that's, it's difficult and nobody should have to do that. So, you know, I'm really grateful. Thank you.
Tiffany, thank you for your comments. Our next meeting, the next meeting of the Board of Education for Saline Area Schools will be held on October 26th, 2021 at 6:30 PM. I'd like to please entertain a motion to adjourn the Board of Education meeting of October 12th, 2021 at 9:08 PM. So moved. Jenny, thank you, second.
Second.
Susan, thank you, second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Hearing none, motion carries, seven zero. We are adjourned at 9:08.